City Council Business Session for Thursday, January 31, 2013 is now in order. First order of, I believe we have a quorum. Yeah, we did. First order of business is approval of the minutes for the business session of January 24, 2013. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the minutes of January 24, 2013 be approved. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, will, is this a voice vote or roll call? Voice vote? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. There are no opposed. Minutes are approved. Second order of business, Councilman Ford, citywide business survey presentation and update of the KC Best Initiatives. Do you want to take it from there?
I will. We have Pete Fullerton from the KC EDC, and I think Gary Sage is with us also.
We're going to have Tom start us off.
Tom, you want to come up to the table?
You don't want me?
We'll give you a seat at the table.
I can do that. Anyway, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We are approaching our second year, so we've, I think, made a lot of progress. As you all recall, this is a collaborative effort, KC Best of the city, the EDC, the Chamber, the Downtown Council, Hispanic EDC, and we've added this year Platt and Clay County EDC. So, we are continuing to try to expand the effort and bring in as many parties that have the same interest of working on business retention and, to some extent, business attraction for Kansas City, Missouri. What I wanted to do, rather than give you a lot of remarks for me, we're going to go over the survey, but I wanted the opportunity just very quickly to have each of the KC Best staff people introduce themselves in the area they work in. Some of you may not know them, they may, you may not realize that they work in your district, and so if we could just start in the back.
Tom, why don't you have them come up to the microphone and introduce themselves?
I'm Gary Sage with Economic Development Corporation. My specific area focus is downtown, but I've got citywide responsibilities.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Pressberry. I represent the area just north of Pershing to the railroad, south to 85th, state line to Prospect.
Good afternoon. Steve Rendy with the EDC. I represent mostly the 6th District and a little bit of the 5th District in South Kansas City.
I'm Matt Jarrett. I am responsible for Kansas City north of the river, so I spend all my time in Platt and Clay Counties.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Davis, a development officer representing the downtown loop and some areas to the east of downtown, so the 4th and 3rd District.
My name's Drew Solomon. I represent the crossroads area, River Market, West Bottoms, 18th and Vine, pretty much the halo surrounding the central business district.
Hi, David McCubery, south of the river, all the way down to, from Prospect going east, all the way down to about 75th Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I, you know, if you, if you need some help in your district or anything, please, you know, contact these people. They're doing a great job for the city, for the EDC, in dealing with companies, and we hope to continue that and certainly thank the city for their financial support of this undertaking, along with our primary benefactor, which has been Kansas City Power and Light, and, to some extent, also Hallmark Cards. With that, I'm going to turn it over, and we've got just a couple of quick presentations by different people, and then we're going to get into survey.
Pete? Are you survey?
Yeah, I'm survey.
Is Chris Lee, does she get here?
She's not.
He's on the way. We'll do that later. Bill, you want to say a few words on behalf of the EDC?
Good afternoon. Bill Dietrich, President of the Downtown Council. We've been engaged in business retention and attraction, gosh, going on 10 years now for, in Kansas City, Missouri, predominantly River to 31st Street, state line road, or 18th and Vine, and when this initiative took off at the EDC, it was a major enhancement of our efforts. It definitely broadened the reach, it brought new resources to the table, broader commitment from the city and the Economic Development Corporation. We are now partnering on a number of major initiatives back this evening. We have a business recognition event down at the Roastery. If anyone's available, we'll be honoring five companies who have increased their investment in downtown, greater downtown, and remain in Kansas City, Missouri. And those are important to do, those kind of events, because it really tells people, we want you here, you're important, if you have issues and challenges, let us help you solve them. And with Pete and his team, and Tom, their leadership, we've been able to bring a lot more to the table to help businesses citywide, as you can see from the EDC staff, resolve their issues. So, we stand 150% behind this initiative. It's been one of the best things we've done in the last several years, to communicate with Kansas City, Missouri businesses that you're very important, we need you here, we want you here, let us help you grow your business.
If I could, I think that we've made an assumption that may not be true for everyone, and the assumption may be that everybody who is here or listening or watching this on television has some idea of what the KC Best program is. I think that we ought to have at least a little bit of an explanation of what it is so that people can put things in context, if that's okay. We, most of us know, but people watching this on TV may have no idea whatsoever.
KC Best is the Business Expansion Support Team, an enhanced effort to get out and create better relationships with our existing business community. On a number of different tiers of that, we also, we go out and do one-on-one business calls. As Bill says, there's also an appreciation events that I think are very important. What we'll go over here in a few moments with regards to the survey is important because it's really a listening post that we do to try to flesh out issues, business development issues, before they become problems, and be able to address those. We've had great collaboration with a number of folks, including our folks at Biz Care, with the city, so we know we have some enhanced communications that we've actually put in place to be able to do this as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll say what I did over again?
No, I don't think you need to, but thanks, Bill. Thank you.
Ready for the? All right, here we go. In respect of the time, I'm going to try to, I'll be good and stay on some points, because there are some points that come through here, but the clicker's going to start moving for us. You have a one-page, this business survey response thing, it's some kind of high level. There's also a link there at the top, if you would like to get ahold of the full report, and we're trying to save some trees there, but obviously, if you request and want a copy printed, we'll make sure that you get one. This is actually the second year that we've been able to pull this together. This, again, is to be able to have, gauge some satisfaction with our business, flesh out some issues, but also have data that we can compare time over time. So, it's not just anecdotal evidence, we can actually go back and say this is within a plus or minus 5%, this is a confidence level. We use the ETC Institute, which is the same group that does the citizen satisfaction surveys for the city, so a group that I think we've vetted over time pretty good. Again, we had a sample size of 3,000 establishments, close to what last year's were, and we had a good turnout in that we had 406 surveys completed, which is a little bit down from last year, but still within our good margin of error. The location of our respondents were what you would expect, you know, concentration certainly in the core area, but certainly it is a citywide response process there. What's the type of organization? I think it ended up being pretty similar in scope to what our general business community in, that two-thirds of the firms are private firms, and usually in a little smaller trend line, in the sense that if you look at this between 2011, 2012, the number of businesses less than 50 employees, 79% was the respondents this year. Last year was 75. So, generally, our smaller businesses are the ones that are responding to this, this survey, so that, some good trend lines. Let's look at some of these things. One of the things we did add and focused in on a little bit is our workforce issues, little bit of a different take than what we had last year in some of the different questions we hit here, but with this one, you can see that historically worker productivity is always one of our high suits, and the availability is sometimes challenging, but if you look at the good and excellent categories that you're looking at on worker productivity, that's 79%, and it kind of goes down to education, technical skills of about 40, 52% if I got my math right there. But I think that's pretty emblematic of some of the other surveys that I've seen over times, or the ones that I've conducted in other places. When you look at employee recruitment, you know, what are the, if you're having problems, what are they related to? Again, I don't think there's necessarily anything of surprise here, the lack of skills, skills gap, we talk about that from workforce development conversation, and things we need to be working on diligently there. But also then, we also wanted to go into a conversation of if the organization is considering a relocation. Again, this is a subset of a subset, so it's not, all the folks didn't necessarily, but what are they going to look at to retain them in the area? What I find fascinating here is how every one of those markers are down from 2011. So, there were fewer people that actually responded to this question than in 2011, which is probably a good thing, if you're trying to kind of, you know, chin-scratch on that. Number one dynamic last year and this year is a financial incentive assistance, with the safety improvements coming in second there, but they're still in that same time or gradient coming down. One of the things that we have here is, you know, what kinds of assistance, and it kind of goes back to that financial, so it's a tag together, what are the different types of information or assistance that folks are looking for? First being a financial, second being business development planning assistance, and so forth. One of the things I guess I would point out here is, we do have a lot of resources to be able to address these, needs of these businesses in these areas, so we do have a programming in place for that. However, we have an awareness issue that we need to work on. This was a question that we asked whether or not that these businesses were aware of our local assistance programs, and as you say, 80% of the respondents said no, which does give everybody some pause, that we've got some work to do here all across the system. It's not just EDC, but all of our business assistance programs, so we need to get better there. But I think one of the ways to look at this also from a positive standpoint is that of the folks that do use these business assistance tools, a vast majority of them said they were helpful. So, when we do create an awareness, we do create an opportunity for these business assistance programs to be utilized, the customer likes it. So, I think the bottom line is, is we need to create better connections so that we have more customers. We also have in here the same conversation with our 311 Action Center, similar questions, similar awareness dynamic, but also similar response, that when folks do go into that system, they are pleased at a 65% rate there. So, that's, again, some positives I think that we can build upon going forward. One of the questions that historically we ask is, you know, what's your frame of reference going forward? What is your expectation? Are you in a growth cycle or so forth? And one of the challenges certainly with the economy is, folks are a little bit hesitant still about what is out there, and you'll see that in the next three years of your organization considering the following, and again, these are by percentages and no plans at the present, so at least that's down from last year, that's 61% in 2011, 46% today. We have then that trade-off, if you will, expand, renovate, and the current facility is up from 25 to 29. Not really looking to increase employment, which is not a good thing for those of us that are kind of wanting to get more folks into good jobs, you know, and certainly have some conversations there, not a huge number, but about some folks that are thinking about relocating or opportunities or options outside the city. Still, folks say relocating Kansas City is still good. Thankfully, there's fewer folks that are planning on decreasing employment, but we did have an outlier there that did have a 2% that said that there was a closing possibility. This one, I think, is interesting in that the question is, is a personal residence located in the city of Kansas City, Missouri? Last year, this was basically 50/50. The folks that responded this time, vast majority of them were not residents of the city. One would say that perhaps that could be a risk factor for us, but I think the next slide, I think, is one of the more fascinating slides with this. Those folks that were more on average managers living outside the city have an overall satisfaction level better this year's survey than last year's survey. Again, one of those chin, good chin-scratcher's that basically, when you say this question, how do you rate Kansas City, Missouri overall as a place to do business? Last year, that percentage was 55%. This year, it's 63%. That's a, that's a track we'd kind of like to see. So, that's a good trend. Now, some of the issues that folks say that they want to, to look at, when it's important for their current locations, I would mention that if you looked at a national site location rating and ranking, these would be close to in the same category, that your first is your safety and security, streets, roads, you've got to get your folks in and through and protect them, and then your infrastructure conversations kind of come through the middle part there as well. So, quick summary, the positives have gone up, so that's a good thing. Last year, the positives and negatives were three to one. This year, it's six, six to one. But also then, we have some opportunities that we need to work on. Again, safety and security is number one in importance, but there's a lower rating that they're being met. The one here on the attitude of local government to business doesn't jive with some of the other questions, but it was ninth in importance and 30th at being met, so we need to kind of dig into that. Streets and local roads, again, second in importance and 18th at being met. I know that's been a priority for this council, all these, to do better of that, and we've got some work to do, and certainly on the taxation, there's a little bit of a gap there. So, that is my, as quick as I possibly could without just completely clicking this thing through as I can. Appreciate so much the good team that we have at the EDC, the other allies that we have that have helped us in these conversations and continue to, and certainly appreciate the support that this body gives, gives to us and to our cities. So, with that, I would open it up.
Okay. Kristi, you want to?
Sure. Thank you.
I was talking so fast, I shot right on mine.
It's all right. Well, thank you all, and I apologize for being a little late this afternoon. Just to kind of finish up, the Chamber, we've been really excited to be part of this process since its inception in 2010. We figure we've coordinated about 60 visits with KC Mo's CEOs, and somewhere, those companies employ somewhere around 40,000. Many of you, particularly you, Councilwoman Markison, have participated in many of these visits, as well as some of the others, and I guess one takeaway that I would offer is that we should be doing more of these visits. I think that is clear, and I, when I mean "we," I mean all of our organizations should be doing more of them. There's really value to sitting across from a CEO and his or her leadership team and getting to know them by listening to their concerns and their opinions about the city and their opinions about the Chamber, and how we can all do a better job and to listen to their plans for growth or their concerns about growth. So, we learn a lot about the company's bottom line and their future plans during these visits, and then, but we also learn how well we're all doing as organizations in helping these businesses grow and prosper and increase employment, which should be, obviously, a goal, is a goal of all of our organizations. So, on a related topic, I just wanted to, I know you all have seen this wonderful document, wanted to remind you all, we are so proud of this, and you all are an extremely important partner in this. Councilman Sharp, we had some long meetings four years ago when we first went down this path. I never thought we would get to the point that we have. So, four years into this, we have this wonderful consensus agenda, these great logos representing six major organizations at the bottom. We have defining guiding principles, which really says, there's a lot of content on the back, and I will just tell you all, this has been very well received in Jeff City and around the state. Some of our organizations that we participate with around the state are thinking they need to do the same thing, because they're hearing about this great consensus agenda that Kansas City has put together. So, related to that, we just want to tell you that the Chamber is very proud to be co-hosting the dinner in Jefferson City, the annual dinner this year in Jefferson City, with the city of Kansas City, Missouri, and that is on Monday, March 4. I believe it's at the Country Club, and we hope that all of you will be able to make the trip down. It's a real important evening. Sometimes I know it doesn't seem like it, it looks like that, but believe me, you get a chance to see a lot of people, and it's not just legislators. We'll be inviting a lot of statewide officials and key staff persons, so I know it's on the mayor's calendar, and we look forward to all the rest of you, and we really appreciate you all and your willingness to co-host this event with us, because I think that says something very important, that we're all in this together. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other presentations that you have that you want to make? All right, good. Councilman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I would mention, just to kind of illustrate this consensus agenda, I was in Jefferson City a couple of days ago when the data centers legislation was being heard by the House Economic Development Committee. I had an opportunity to speak to it, as did Gary Sage, and we had representatives, although they weren't there, they had sent their comments from the Platt County EDC, so just to illustrate that it's not only on paper, but that it does work in Jefferson City, and I was glad to be a part of that, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Carls?
Oh, it's my turn. Yes, I just, when you do your, and when you have your, I can't think of what to call it, your survey.
Survey.
I got it. Is it, is it just, is it a verbal thing as well as written, or do you leave the survey there and they write their comments and send them in?
I think it was all the above, right? Because I think we, you mail, and then there was, in order to get the right kind of responses and the right numbers, there were certainly some calls that were made by the institute to make sure we are able to get good distribution and good, reliable data overall.
Okay, and I did go one time, it was a business downtown, and it was quite interesting. He was starting up, and he was quite pleased at that time. I hope he's still there. And I also want to, you know, make sure we go over the city, because some of the 3rd District people are right outside, right outside the downtown area, and I know they would want to be included as well.
And one of the things we did in this survey that I believe was new this year was, as they were filling out, we actually asked the question, would you like an EDC representative to call you and visit on an issue? And there were 70 folks that did that, and our folks have done the follow-up with that as well. So, I thought that was, again, we have their attention and want to make sure that they know there's an opportunity there to talk to somebody. It's not just a survey that we wanted to get back and visit with folks, and yeah, I mean, that's one of the joys of this business, is actually going and seeing those dreams in action.
Up close and personal, yeah.
Good stuff. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carls. Councilwoman Markison?
Yes, I just want to encourage all my colleagues to participate in this. It's just such a great experience, because, well, I have found, like my colleague, that it's usually very positive. I mean, and I think just the fact that you're there visiting them makes it all the same positive, you know, at the outset, but you learn a lot about the businesses, and my last one I went to happened to be like at State Street, and they were talking about how important the downtown development was to attracting young professionals and keeping them downtown after hours. They wanted more food trucks, they wanted more activities in the day, and it's things that we can easily accommodate without any expenditure of public funds. We just say, you know, if you're doing food trucks, go down by State Street, and they'll love it. They, you know, they want a dog park in Case Park, and things that make people enjoy our downtown, and I think that's why there are, many of the companies are located in downtown, so it's been really, our investment is definitely paying off, and I think with the streetcar, they're very excited about that possibility for their workers, so they can get there without driving a car. Many of the young people don't want to drive the car down, but it really is informative, and it's a way that you can interact with CEOs and their, and their top staff, or many staff, and find out things to, businesses that are expanding, we can provide that information to the EDC so they can follow up, and you know, it's kind of, it seems like a chance encounter, but it's a really good opportunity to make sure those businesses are happy about our service, and if they're not, we can usually make some tweaks, but that we, if they're planning to expand, we know it upfront, we can do some important reconnaissance work. But I really encourage you, because they're in every, all the businesses are in all of our districts, so it's really a good experience. And thank you for, the Chamber, I think, was the motivator behind this, but we all came together and.
Absolutely. It's been a team effort. Our role is to coordinate the visits, and I have to give Chelsea Smith the full credit for that, and it's not easy to coordinate, it's a lot of moving parts.
Councilman Sharp?
And they're all sizes. It's not just big, they're very small companies and big, excuse me.
That's all right. Councilman Sharp?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say what great partners I think we have in trying to grow the city and bring more jobs and businesses to the city, and if I could comment just briefly on the consensus agenda, when we started this about four years ago, and this kind of emanated from the Legislative Committee of the Council, there were some groups that weren't quite as on board initially as others, and we started with the Chamber, the EDC, the Downtown Council, and the city, and since then, Civic Council and Platt County Economic Development Council have added to it. But we were hearing that, you know, we, there were different voices, all speaking for Kansas City, all with slightly different agendas, and by having this joint agenda, we are speaking with one voice, and I'm hopeful this session, with some of the changes that we've seen in the General Assembly, that we'll have to have a whole new list, or at least a lot more new items next year when we do this, that we'll be able to get some of these passed that we've been working on for so long. But these are really great partner organizations we have, and I'm glad we have such a positive relationship with them. And if I could just briefly talk about food trucks, it's interesting, because as some of you may recall, when we were back in Boston for the National League of Cities meeting, Boston has made a conscious decision to really support food trucks and to use them as kind of incubators for startup restaurants, and they offer a lot of incentives, places where they can park, and eased parking restrictions, so that has been a conscious business decision, an economic development decision of that city. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Councilman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that struck me in the survey, and we've talked about this from time to time, is the fact that Biz Care and our economic development agencies are not known to the, to people who want to get into business or are already in business, and I guess, if I may put out a challenge there, Mr. Mayor, I think that's, that's got to change, and I think we need to, whether it's working collectively with all of these groups, or however it's done, we need to put together a plan that markets those agencies effectively and does so in a repetitive manner. Just to simply say they're here, that message gets lost. It is only through that frequency and that consistency that these agencies are here and working that that message begins to penetrate, and I may ask the manager, as I know that we are looking for a new Communications Director, to me, this is probably one of the top things to put on their agenda to do, and I know we've got a number of communications folks in a lot of different agencies, but I guess I'm sitting here and I'm seeing this again, and that has to be, that has to change. The good work that's being done is being lost on a large. I guess I'm sitting here and I'm seeing this again. And, and, and that has to be, that, that has to change. The good work that's being done is being lost on a large percentage of business people. And, and I think if, as we, as we've seen, when they are engaged, they're very effective. So, to me, this is another opportunity of, of one plus one equalling three, or four, or five, or 10, or 100. And I, I, I think we can't let it slide anymore.
Thank you, Councilman Wagner. Councilman Glover?
Yes, I, I want to thank you for all that you've done, the chamber especially, and of course, EDC and all the other partners. I'd like to add to what Scott said or emphasize. Where I've found that people don't know about the good things that the Kansas, Kansas City can do to help a business is when they're starting a business. And Kansas City has grown dramatically because of entrepreneurs, well, Joyce Hall being one, probably the most prominent. And, and I know the chamber has declared that to be one of its key objectives. I think getting that word out about what we can do to people who are starting a business or have small businesses, frequently, small business owners don't know the range of help we can give. So, I think that, that's critically important, too. The last thing, though, I would like you to say, since we're on Channel 2, and many people might be watching this, that own a business or wish to start a business and utilize this program, can you tell people how to contact and engage into this program either through the Internet, or to log on, or a phone number? What is the most appropriate way for someone wishing to, to access these programs, to access?
One of the things I think is, we are in baby step mode in, in trying to get better and better relative to hitting a lot of different layers of communications channels. Through our Launch KC initiative, LaunchKC.com, there's a battery of, of, there's a website. Through that, you can get to the Twitter, the Facebook, and other, other venues there on the EDCKC.com, who's actually, we're, we're in the process of going in transition in the next couple of days to a new, a new look, touch, and feel there. So, hopefully, that, that particular spot gets better. But also through there, you can get in touch with us, can also see what's out there, can also connect with the other social media networks that, that we've been able to develop in the last few months as, as well. Again, about trying to connect networks with networks is the only way we're going to do it because none of us are going to have enough marketing dollars solely by ourselves to be able to do that. It's really about, you know, again, working as, as a team to, to do that and, and make sure that we have robust information out there so folks can see it, touch it, then connect. And then we have good and talented staff to actually make those connections and get folks, folks going. We're on a, on a good move, but we, we're continuing to look to get better.
How, for the KC Best Program, what is the key contact where people could access that?
Do you mean if, Councilman, do you mean if someone would like to have us come out and do, and have a visit?
Yes.
Oh, well, that would be easy. We could call the chamber. At, and, and more specifically, Chelsea Smith at the chamber, 374-5447. And we're trying to schedule as many of these as they, as we can. So, we'd be happy to talk with them about it.
So, that's what they'd need to do.
Yeah. And the other thing that we're trying to do with the EDC staff is be in, into the community so that they, that these folks are actually at meetings with businesses and various other organizations, community organizations, business organizations. So, they kind of float in that kind of connection so we can get that, again, that network to, to, to connect holistically.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Well, I want to thank you all. I'm sorry, Ed?
I thought you were going to come back to me like you usually do.
I am, but I just wanted to.
Was he pretty sure?
Kind of anxious here. I, I wanted to personally thank you all. I've gone on a number of the visits. And Tom, I want to thank you for what you've done. You're always the interface that I see at EDC Executive Committee meetings, talking. And Pete, I know what you're trying to do at EDC. Christie, you and the chamber are at the forefront. And Bill, thank you very much for everything that you're doing to support the EDC, the chamber, and, and KC Best. Now, Ed, if you want to wrap up?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think what, what you see here is, is the, the new look of the KC EDC, the emphasis on, on partnerships and business retention and statistical-based results. I thought one interesting takeaway from the surveys were, were the rankings paralleled in so much what, what we're working on in advance KC and the, the strategies there, which indicate I think we're right on target in, in terms of what the future of the EDC will look like.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Oh, and just one other thing, you might get the word out to banks, business loan officers. If they have the information at their fingertips, they may be hearing from some of those banks, and it'd be a good idea for them to be able to say, we may not be able to help you, call these guys.
Yep, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Sure. All right, next item of business is discussion of ordinances, resolutions, communications on today's docket, or for floor introduction, Councilman Sharp?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, a, an ordinance that was sponsored by Councilman Wagner, and I will be on the docket today. It came out of the Public Safety Committee and was advanced unanimously from our committee. And this deals with strengthening our ability to enforce our ordinances and state laws prohibiting the sale of tobacco products to children. And I, I think it's fair to say that, from the testimony that, that we received in committee and, and from the, from other meetings, that, that we've had little or no enforcement of our ordinances or of state laws prohibiting the sale of tobacco products to children. And this has been a longstanding concern of many people on the council. We, we all remember the leadership of our former colleague, Councilwoman Kathy Jolly, on this. But it's also been a longstanding concern of our Health Department, of public health advocates, and community groups that are working to prevent children from becoming addicted to nicotine or other drugs, such as the Hickman Mills Prevention Coalition. And we had quite a bit of testimony about this in the Gateway Crimes Task Force that, that I serve on and the Councilman Wagner chairs. And we had heard this, but we really didn't have good definitive data on, on just how bad the problem was. So, regulated industries actually recruited some youth volunteers to, to try to make underage buys of tobacco products, just like they do and have been doing for some time on, on the sale of alcoholic beverages. And that, the results of that are, were distributed to you earlier today. But they made basically 100 different attempted buys, it was actually 99. And they made them in all, in all areas of the city. And most of, most of the buys were at gas stations and convenience stores. And you see in the chart on the second page of this, the number of times they attempted to buy cigarettes and the number of times they were allowed to buy cigarettes. And as you can tell, 56 and a half percent of the time, they were able to, to buy cigarettes illegally. And for convenience stores, they were able to buy them 60% of the time. For gas stations, almost 63% of the time, and even higher percentages in, in some other types of venues. It was interesting that Mr. Majors reported to us, in many cases, they, they didn't even ask for IDs. And in some cases, they asked for IDs, saw they weren't old enough, and said, well, we'll, you know, we'll sell them to you anyway as long as we don't get in any trouble for it. They didn't this time. But if you flip back a couple of more pages, you'll see the biggest percentages where, where they most frequently sold to underage kids were in the east area, which is basically the part of the city east of Prospect, and in north Kansas City. So, it was pretty clear from this that, that we, we do have a problem on this, and it's a problem that affects the health of our, our most precious assets, our children. So, we introduced an ordinance that, that came out of the Public Safety Committee unanimously. And it gives us a way to enforce our ordinances and state law against underage, the sale of tobacco products to, to underage kids. And the, probably the biggest, or the most, I think the most effective provision of this is a new section, 2019, that authorizes the manager of regulated industries to assist with enforcement. Because they have good experience in doing this on, on the sale of, of alcohol to kids. And the Commissioner of Revenue simply didn't have the staff to, to do these kind of inspections. And we put in there that the manager of regulated industries would also have the ability to conduct informal dispositions of contested cases because on the sale, on violations of our ordinances regarding the sale of alcoholic beverages, there's hardly ever a case where they go to an actual hearing. I think we were told that in the last three and a half years, have only been two hearings in that whole time. But most of the time, these things are worked out through negotiation. The proprietor, the proprietor of the business in question that has violated the law will have to stipulate that, yes, they did it. And then there's agreed upon, an agreed upon penalty, usually a suspension of sales for a certain period of time, or paying the cost of the enforcement effort. But there, in almost all these cases, they are worked out informally like that. And they seem to have really had a good outcome on reducing the sale of alcoholic beverages to underage kids. Because whenever they, they enter into one of these agreements, then the place is re-inspected to, to see, to make sure that they are following the law. So, this will be before us this afternoon, and we think it will allow us to protect more of our children from becoming addicted to tobacco products. And we, we just want these businesses to follow the law and to take it seriously, and I think this will allow them to do it. And I'm sure Councilman Wagner would like to make some, some comments on it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Sharp. Councilman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, you know, John has a habit of giving it all out there, and then I have very little to say, but.
I would never do that.
So be it. No, the, I think the only other thing I would add, Mr. Mayor, is that what brought us to this was the activity of our, of our Gateway Crimes Task Force, trying to deal, originally in this case, some of the synthetic drug issues that are out there. Many times, those, those sorts of drugs are available in convenience stores, small stores that sometimes put it, you know, put it behind the cabinet or behind the, the counter, and you know, just to ask for it by name, or you kind of give a wink and, and you can get that product. The bonus with this, and Councilman Sharp went through it very well, is that not only does this become a mechanism for us to deal with those stores that may be selling that sort of material that may not be selling alcohol, but it obviously gets us to another issue that is just as big, just as dangerous, and that is selling to, to underage individuals. The, the, the reality is that this used to be a state job. And they had, the state would have 22 inspectors that would go and, and see if they're selling to minors. That 22, after a few years, is now down to two. And there is absolutely, well, maybe one unless you know something more than I do. But, but the reality is that the state is not doing it. The reality is that the problem continues. And the unfortunate reality is, is that we, as the city, where the rubber meets the road, is having to deal with it. What we've laid out here, I think, is a great process that's consistent with the effective process that regulated industries currently has for alcoholic beverages. We expect the same kind of efficacy that we have in that area. So, hopefully, unless there are any questions here, we ask for your support later today. And I should also say, I should also thank Councilwoman Marcusson, as we've had conversations on this, too. Obviously, this function rested in the Revenue Division for years and years and years. With what we're doing, we still take into account how they license cigarette selling in the city. But I think now have a very good enforcement provision to allow us to move forward and, and deal with some of the issues that we're experiencing in, in our neighborhood. So, I would be remiss if I did not provide a few accolades across the room.
Thank you, Councilman Wagner. Councilwoman Carls?
Yes, I just wondered how, how do they determine female, you know, gender as to who's buying?
That's done at birth.
Those were.
What? Well, gender and race, I mean, who's keeping that information?
Those were the testers. Those were the testers. That's just the gender and ethnicity of the testers.
Okay, because I thought you meant, they were saying, here's a woman, here's an African. You know, that's what I thought. I thought that, who's doing that?
They, they wanted to see if they were more inclined to, to violate the law dealing with one gender or another, or based on ethnicity.
And these people were from the city?
Volunteers.
Volunteers?
Student volunteers.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ford?
Mayor, on the docket today, under noncommittee resolution.
Hold on just a second. Has everybody finished commenting on this particular issue? Okay, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, Councilman Ford. Just wanted to make sure we were clear of one subject. Go ahead, sir.
Under noncommittee resolutions, you have a resolution to appoint the successor directors to the Red Bridge Community Improvement District.
That's correct.
This is a change of procedure in how we've been handling this issue under CID's. All CID's that are communicated to the clerk are now being sent to planning and zoning, which gives our committee and our staff an opportunity to take a closer look. And under state statute, it's, it's, it's by default, if the, the, if the mayor doesn't appoint the successor directors, then they're automatically appointed by default. And we thought it would be better to be more proactive and, and put stamp of approval on it. So, that's, that's why we're seeing that for the first time.
Thank you, sir. That's, that's correct. And I'm glad you two picked that up. I was, was going to, is there any discussion on that issue? None? There's another, there's an ordinance, and it's not quite the same, but along similar lines, it merely establishes the Ethnic Enrichment Commission, all 80 or so of them. After much negotiation, after much negotiation, we were finally able to get everything done so that we were able to establish them in the same way and populate this commission as, in the same way as we populated the others. We simply were unwilling to say, just because you've been there and done that, we'll give you a pass. We had some negotiation to do, and I'm glad that we were able to come to resolution. It's done, it's over. So, that's what that ordinance is about. Any discussion on that issue? Are there any other ordinances or resolutions on today's docket that need to be discussed? Hearing none. How about items to be placed on future business session agendas? Councilman Ford?
There was a, a reference in, in the editorial page this, this morning on Mid-America Regional Council's projections of population growth in the region.
Yes, sir.
And I thought that would be a fascinating topic to be presented here at a business session.
All right. Councilman Sharp?
Mr. Mayor, the Healthcare Trust Board has concluded negotiations with our, our insurance carriers for our employee health insurance. And I think we've got some very great news to present to the council. So, when we'd be able to put that on, I think this would be something that we'd all be interested in, our employees would be interested in, and, and we'd like that opportunity as soon as we can, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Are there any other items that anyone wants, Councilwoman Marcusson?
Well, we do, I'm just reminding people, we do have in business session for two weeks, the department directors are coming to, to talk about the budget. So, there are going to be extended time for those sessions. They're going to start at noon. We're going to start having lunch at 11:30.
When does this start?
Next week.
Next week. So, you, you should have gotten a, you should have gotten it in the, on your email. I think Joyce sent those out. And, so we'll have from 12, 12 o'clock to, to 3 for next week, and then in two weeks. So, you'll hear from all the departments. So, if you want to, you know, kind of peruse through the web and see if there are any questions you have with the department directors. So, we have our budget hearing starting Friday, tomorrow, not Friday, Saturday. Saturday, 9 to 11 at the Mohart Center.
Anyone else? Anything else? Councilman Ford?
In, in planning and zoning yesterday, we talked about after the next hearing, after the federal judge on the Beacon Hill project, we thought it would be good for a review of where we are in the, the entire project. We, we've been getting it piecemeal, both in committee and council. Good news on the grocery store, good news on student housing, good news on the colon aid. But in terms of how they work together, we, we thought, since the city has made a major investment in those areas, that would be nice to have.
Thank you, Councilman Ford. Anybody else? Anybody else? Any other subjects? Hearing no other subjects, and is there a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I move we go into closed session to address legal matters pursuant to 610.021 parentheses 1 of revised statute of Missouri, personal matters pursuant to 61.021 parentheses 3 of the revised statute of Missouri, and bids and proposals pursuant to 610.021 parentheses 12.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into closed session to address legal matters pursuant to 610.021 paren 1, and personnel matters pursuant to 610.021 paren 3, and bids and proposals pursuant to 610.021 paren 12. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Wagner?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Carls?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Serco?
Aye.
Glover?
Aye.